Fledilations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded, but it's not the official minutes. Uh, let's see, any revisions?
No.
Uh, public comment? Mr. Gans here today.
Good afternoon.
Global comment?
A wish to come to the comment. Thanks for allowing me my new role to step in. Uh, Ms. Johnson is also here from Lone Mountain. So, um, I've spoken with a number of you independently and casually about a project, and you probably have also heard via various media. Explore Big Sky had a really nice article a bit ago about Cold Smoke. Um, but I wanted to come by and just give you a briefing real quick for just a few minutes and give you some deliverables to have a look at. And it was kind enough to bring this up on the screen. Uh, this is basically a joint project between Lone Mountain Land Company and Big Sky Community Housing Trust. Where Lone Mountain is basically the, is the starting pitcher, the development, the developer of this property. Uh, the housing trust would be the ones who would actually be administering it, handling the applications for ownership or rental. I want to go to the next slide. And this is an area that Cold Smoke is in two different parts. Um, it's this chunk of land here adjacent to the current Riverview Apartments here that are nearing completion next to the future Fire Department. Um, and the northern part of it is projected to be about 264 apartments for either rent or purchase or rent alone. And down here farther into the weeds and woods, uh, is projected to be about 125 single-family homes. Um, the apartments are studio, one and two bedroom. The homes down below are two and three bedroom, detached garage. So the kind of tagline for this whole project is an affordable path to home ownership in Big Sky. Uh, these are not intended to be workforce housing or dorm-style housing units in the traditional sense of the term. Um, these are meant to be owner-occupied. They're all deed-restricted. Uh, these are not, um, meant to be any kind of VRBOs or short-term rentals. And the idea being, um, a variety of different housing options, uh, different floor plans, and you have a number of those in the, in the packet, uh, to allow people the opportunity to say if they're an individual, uh, they might rent a studio or a one-bedroom apartment up here, and then they're here in Big Sky for a year. They, um, meet somebody, they, uh, connect, they maybe get married, and then they want to move down here and buy a house. So, part of the need that we're trying to fill is to move the definition of Big Sky overall from a recreational community more into a real full-time community housing, uh, a, 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 a town where people live here and want to stay here and bring their families here and enroll their kids into school. Um, so, next slide. Here's an illustration of these apartments up on top and the housing down below here. So there would be, um, probably a new, a new stoplight or a roundabout up here to Ace Hardware. This is one of the means of access into here. Uh, another would be over here. Uh, Skyview is over here, so that road down to Skyview winds around and then goes up next to Mr. McEwen's house. And that's one means of ingress into the, the main artery. The other would be up here. There's an old bridge over here, which would have to be rebuilt and a new means of, uh, the new road graded and down into the development like so. So, these are meant to be affordable homes. Affordable definition being that nobody who has whatever kind of income in Big Sky is going to be paying more than 30% of their income on either rent or a mortgage payment. So regardless of what the cost of these are to build, Lone Mountain is developing financing plans and, um, uh, getting access to both public and private funds, uh, to enable these houses and these apartments to be affordable to the Big Sky community. Uh, so that, that's basically our definition of what affordability is without putting a price tag on them. But for example, if, um, if somebody is making a hundred thousand dollars of either individual or joint family incomes here, well, that means that they shouldn't be spending more than about 30 or $33,000 on a mortgage payment or rental payments during a typical year. And that's how we're pricing these as we go through. So I'm getting used to this "we" as a new pronoun. So, um, so that's fundamentally it. Um, but I wanted to give you guys, you know, an update on it and maybe just get some feedback from you all about, um, your reaction to this, how this feeds into your future needs as a school district for hiring, for retaining employees, for, um, expanding the facilities of the school to really max out, um, what this school could become. And as you know, I have a deep love and affection for this school, uh, as everybody in the community does. And, you know, we want this to be a, a real legacy, um, asset for the community. And we feel, even though this is two or three years into the future in terms of livability, next year probably moving dirt around, the year after that, starting to vertical build, and then early '27, um, occupancy. So, there we go. Open it up to comments.
Thank you, John. Any questions? I think since this is the kind of trustees meeting, we should let any questions to the trustees. It's not a town hall meeting.
Yeah. Can do that. No, I appreciate you coming in and letting us know about what's going on. I think it's great as far as getting people here and hopefully getting some younger families in. I mean, that's what we need.
You bet. Uh, we're going to be part of the Community Week coming up, uh, October 7th to 12th. And all of you, in the meantime, certainly you've got my card, you know how to get in touch, and during that week, um, you know, we'll have a, a table over there at the Wilson or whatever and
Great.
Opportunity there to connect as well.
Awesome.
Yeah, I would just add Kreider Bancroft is really the lead on this project, and I can also be available to answer questions or, you know, schedule meetings if anyone wants to chat for it.
Awesome. Thanks, Anna.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in and sharing everything with us. Awesome.
Okay, um.
Thanks, Anna.
Yeah. Thank you.
Move on to, uh, minutes approval from August 13th. Make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 13th.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May opposed? That's your answer. Uh, superintendent report.
Yeah, so I gave you a copy of the report there, um, in front of you. Enrollment, we're sitting at 384 right now. Um, I thought it would be interesting to look back at the last two, September, September 2023 and September 2022, just as a comparison. So, uh, September 2023, we're down eight, and from September 2022, down 53.
It's still hard to believe.
It's hard to believe, but, you know, hopefully we're kind of stabilizing and we can plan based on that. Um, House 408 update, uh, aggregate amount this year is 575, or $587,000 for this round of donations. I'm going to try to get this all over five donations. Um, right now I have 290,000 committed verbally. So, I'll keep updating you until, until we hit that $587,000 mark. And then I just wanted to give a quick update on the education interim committee leading into this session, and it's not good news. Um, if there's going to be any movement at all in the funding formula, this is what we were all hopeful for, and, you know, in our roles in School Works Association, Administrators' Association, it's not going to happen in this session. It looks like it's going to get kicked down the road to 2027. And what they, what they would like to do this time is have some increases due, due to inflationary increases, um, could be up to 8%. Um, and their additional objectives are to raise teacher, beginning teacher pay to, for districts to either catch up, um, uh, and possibly a housing stiping program for educators across the state. That all sounds great, um, but their target is 50 to 75 million. My guess is it's going to be on the lower end of that 50 million. I mean, and even at 75, if they just said every district, we're going to divide this equally, it'd be 200k, um, per district. So, I'll keep you updated. I, again, I don't anticipate anything happening with a, a funding formula, and, and masking wouldn't be the right word, but, um, it's going to, the funding formula is going to get really examined in the Decentennial Study, which happens after the session closes in 2025. So, I, you know, from a budget perspective, we, we can probably anticipate a little higher increase than the two and a half that we've been averaging, or right around two and a half, but we're not going to, we're not going to realize anything significant, you know, from the state.
That's unfortunate, but.
Any questions? Glad I guess I got one system.
I would just add, I, I think the inflation piece has been incredibly frustrating, right? So you're getting 3% from the state. We know our electric goes up 23% year over year, right? It's.
Yeah.
If we get it to 4% next year, it's, it's not going to be worth any dollar.
That's what I would guess it'll be too, is instead of the, you know, five over two years, they might say, okay, well, you get four over, eight over two years, four per year, which is still not even going to make it there.
No.
Where most schools are operating, not just us.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Uh, Marlo?
Thank you. Um, walked a great start for the school year. Uh, academics are going well. Um, Tuesday grade updates started today for middle school. We'll start high school next week because they've only been in school for a week now. Tomorrow night, we have our back-to-school night from 4:00 to 6:00, and then at 6:00, we have a presentation from Dr. Franklin, who we've worked with, on how to support your teen, um, as they are going through teenage years and their wellness. So it should be a good presentation. Um, we know we have some conflicts tomorrow night with all the other things happening for the school district, so we'll send out that presentation, um, on Friday to everyone. And then, uh, we start math testing next week, and that is our diagnostic tool to see if we need additional support as we start the fall, which will be good. And we also sent out our testing schedule thanks to Dr. Brooke. Student life. Expedition was again a great success, and I just want to say this is such an incredible tradition, and I hope we always keep it and it remains a focus for our high school. Uh, and I want to honor everybody who spent nights under the stars, and it was quite cold as I recall. So to Patty Hamlin, Tony Coppola, Lindsay Felder, Kate Isley, Jeremy Carter, Brad Packard, Tim Sullivan, John Hannes, Vanessa Wilson, Cigar Gula, Devin Dublin, and Joy Brook, and to our amazing volunteers who took time off of work to support our school and our students. Seth Barker, Ryan Ayers, Marion Schmidt, Kim Dickerson, Rob McCray, and Karen Matlin. So that is so huge that we have people willing to do that for, for our kids. And then lastly, um, we're getting close to homecoming, which is at the end of this month, September 30th to October 5th. Grade entry forms will be sent out this week, and we have a really great week planned thanks to the help of our Homecoming Parent Group, which is being led by Kristen Brown and Hannah Farr, our student council, and of course, our fabulous PTO, I'm your Holly. So, thank you.
Be a fun week.
This is a week.
Yeah. No, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff on there.
I know.
Let's take a look at. Awesome. Thank you, Marlo. Good evening.
Um, we're off and running for the school year. Um, routines and procedures are getting solidified in the classrooms. Um, we have wonderful group of new teachers that have joined our team. Um, awesome returning staff, um, our veteran staff so strong. Um, and it's just been a great positive beginning to the school year. Um, we've started our beginning of the year testing. Um, it'll kind of run in various phases throughout the month. We'll have it wrapped up by the end of September. Um, we had our back-to-school night last night and had a great turnout, really positive vibe. Parents are happy, kids are happy, they were excited to tour everyone around the building. Um, PTO sold spiritware. They were here till the very last minutes handing out T-shirts to everyone, which was so great. Um, then we took family photos and updated posters in the hall. Thank you, Mr. Franny. Um, we also have, uh, nine staff members who have taken advantage. There's grants through OPI to spend some ESAR funds. So we've had nine staff members put in requests, so they're getting $500 worth of supplies for their classrooms, which is really great. And then, um, on the professional learning front, we have a new cohort of seven, uh, staff members who have started letter training, which is literacy essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. Um, and it's a two-year commitment. It's a pretty big deal. Um, so we have another seven, and that'll pretty much round out almost everybody on staff having that by the tight end bench, so that's what we're saying.
Nice.
Yeah.
Great. Questions? Awesome. Thanks, Brittany. Mr. Sullivan?
Thanks. Uh, thanks. Um, this is start for the year. Uh, congratulations on Vanessa Wilson who completed her, um, IB workshop for the math applications and interpretations class that she'll be teaching this year. Um, I know that she worked hard to get that done, especially with Expedition 2. So, um, just a kudos to her. Uh, this month, this is, or the, the past few weeks, Mrs. Martinez and I have been busy meeting with students and parents, you know, as needed, just to support any final course decisions, you know, as we approach that deadline for, um, coming up this Friday for course adjustments. Um, we've been working with the juniors and seniors and just finalizing any IB class, um, IB classes. So, um, and that's been going well. Working, um, this, this month, I've been working closely with the students, um, who are taking the IB classes online through our online language provider, Pomoja. It's been a really good opportunity as a cohort to provide some strong onboarding for them, um, and they all seem to be feeling pretty confident with it. Um, and I'm going to be there as a resource to help them navigate that, um, as they continue that online course moving forward. Um, and then on the digital note, the IB did formally announce that they, they plan to begin transitioning to online exams, piloting some schools this year, and then they'll start adding those in on almost a subject-by-subject basis, starting with languages being the most straightforward ones with the, the typed response. Um, and then they're going to start integrating other subjects. So, um, we, we can expect to do that. That's on the horizon. Schools will be piloting that this next year, um, in May, and then we should expect to start beginning in May 2026. And with that said, um, coming up this month, I'll reach out to families, especially those seniors, about navigating or registering for IB exams, and then I'll report back. That's it.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Uh, are you doing activities?
Yeah, I can. Do activities. Yeah, I mean, we're just right in the middle of fall sports. Two soccer teams, volleyball team, football team. Um, you know, I would say that 75% of our high school students are participating in fall sport. Uh, so that's great.
Yeah.
Um, we've, we've come a long way, and we're early into our second and third week of competition, so we're off and running for fall sports.
Awesome. Yeah, so far, so good. Ish. I mean, it's not all bad.
No, no.
Thanks for getting everyone inside.
Yeah.
Shuffling the schedules.
Yeah, yeah.
Soccer team toughed it out, just saying.
That's right.
See how they feel next week. Awesome. Uh, Corky, business report. Any ears? We can't hear you. Nope.
You muted there, Corky? Shows you muted.
There you go. There you go.
Um, so, not to sound like a broken record, but we're already starting to look at fiscal year '26 budget, the testing gave enrollments, but, uh, fall counts the first week of October, so base the numbers, remember, we'll start projecting to see where we need to be. Um, one, private, private grant dollars, and two, what changes or cuts we'll have to make for the follow-up for next fiscal year. Um, fiscal year '25 is already start. Obviously, I think, uh, we had our first big payroll with this, with this staff back, and, uh, it, good and bad news. Everything went great, bad, um, we burned about 30% of our fiscal year '25, uh, budget. So, uh, we will be heavily up for a week like this year, as assumed. Um, besides that, everything is moving along.
Great. Any questions? Thanks, Corky. Move on to, uh, no committee reports. We'll talk about that coming up, so move on to discussion and action. Take a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to open the discussion of the cell phone use in schools by students as per the governor's request.
Second. So this can be a discussion and possible action, or just a directive, or however you guys want to leave it. Um, I, the letter that the governor sent to all trustees and superintendents in the state of Montana is in the packet. It's a call for schools to be able to get any phone use during the school day. Our current policy is, as we have it in the handbook, I said was attached in the packet, but I didn't attach it in the packet, but I have it right here. Um, and I think we can discuss this and then see how, you know, how you guys would like to proceed. Um, so our current policy, and I'll just read it directly. Uh, protect teaching and learning. Students may not use cell phones, earbuds, or headphones during scheduled class time unless approved by the teacher for special circumstances. Uh, during assessments, teachers may collect phones to ensure academic integrity. Teachers may also collect phones during instruction to minimize distractions. The unauthorized use of cell phones disrupts the instructional program and distracts the learning environment. Therefore, unauthorized use is ground for confiscating the device by schools official, school officials, including classroom teachers and supervisory aides. Any unauthorized use of a cellphone during instruction will result in the student turning in their phone to the front office. Parents will be asked to pick to collect their phone at the end of the day. Students with repeated violations should leave their phones at home or will be required to turn them in in their front office at the start of the school day. Middle school students should have their phones at home, in their lockers, or in their backpacks for the duration of the school day. High school students may responsibly access their phones during non-instructural times outside of class and flex time only during the school day. The administration may regulate the use of cell phones by parents and other adults while on school property. The districts are responsible for lost or stolen devices. So we put this in, I think, two years ago.
Last year, I think.
Was it last year?
Last year.
Last year? Um, and I'll let Marlo kind of share what the, how, how that works and how it's been working in schools and things like that. Um, I mean, I know that probably some parents and community members that can possibly reflect to you guys about this because it did get a lot of publicity. Um, some schools are making drastic changes to what their current policies are, going to a full out, you know, we're not, we're not going to allow cell phone use in schools at all. Um, there is significant research and significant articles out that it does distract learning, it does distract students and, and, and things like that. So, um, really at this particular point, you know, I think we just want to have a conversation. My recommendation would be we have a conversation and then decide if we want to do something different, look at a few different policies next month and, and really see what we want to do.
Yeah.
Um, and Marlo can.
Sure. I just kind of prepared, um, a quick paragraph so that I didn't lose the plot. Um, our current policy works, but phones are still a distraction. So during instruction, we generally don't have issues. Um, many high school teachers have been promoted to phone parking lots to keep phones at bay during instruction. We observe high school students using their phones frequently during non-instruction after, such as lunch, free periods, and passing periods. The biggest challenge, um, is during our high school flex time, which is our study hall time, where they're supposed to get additional help if they need it, um, keeping phones away during that time because they shouldn't be up. And then, um, I think since we started collecting phones during assessment, we fed fewer academic integrity issues. I will tell you, towards the end of the year, it gets a little wild. It's a little Wild Westy to put the phones, and so we have to collect more phones and have parents pick them up, particularly in the middle school. And a lot of this falls on Anita, right at the front office, and she handles it very well, and the parents have always been very supportive when we ask them to do that. Um, so it's not a simple issue to resolve, so I'm glad you guys are making the final decision.
Well, I was, I've been called as that parent, unfortunately, a couple of times, so I get it.
Weird.
Yeah, I know, strange. And that, that was one of my questions, though, is, you know, what, what would be the burden on the teachers more if we did have something like this? Like, collecting them, or would it be like a, if, if we did ban, or what, how would we handle that? Like, what, I mean, we just can't come into office at all, like, can't come in the building?
Well, I would think we'd want to first kind of get engaged on what everybody's thinking about this particular issue through some data collection, including from the educators.
Yeah.
Um, because it would, a, a lot of that would fall on, it would have to fall on all of us, right? It would, it would have to fall on all of us. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be able, if we were to do it, it'd have to be 100% by and by everybody, you know, and pretty high percentage of by and by the community because it would, it couldn't be one of those things where if I walk by and you're using your phone and I call you on it, Marlo walks by and discussing, I don't feel like dealing with it today. We'd have to be really prepared to deal with it.
Yeah.
Which I, I, right? And, and, and I'm ready to do that if, if that's what, you know. But I think we should, first of all, collect some significant data around what kind of support would exist
Right.
Um, for that, and then, and then make a really strong decision here, or a decision we can live with either way. MTSBA has provided three different policies, you know, one being absolutely nothing anywhere in time, one being something similar to what we have, and one is kind of like, eh, do what you like.
Right. Um. Because this is just a recommendation from the governor wanting to move this forward.
Could potentially be a warm-up for your doing this, is what I suspect.
Okay.
And I, that's just me talking. Um, I would suspect that is a warm-up to, we're going to make this tied to something with your accreditation standards.
Uh.
Which could be, right? Which is pretty easy to do.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and that, it, as a anecdotal story, you know, the, the soccer coaches were, were relatively on board with kind of banning cell phones on their, on their bus trips and received significant pushback.
Oh, right.
So, just kind of, that's where some community members are falling. Others probably would say, yes, take my kid's phone, never give it back. So I think it's, we would want to gather some significant data around, like, really where do people fall, bring that back here, r- really talk publicly that we're going to be discussing this.
Yeah.
Um, and solicit public input.
Very well-known.
And then, you know, we could present three policies, and that's, oh, dude.
Yeah.
And not to put anyone on the spot without having the data, but I'd be curious at just the elementary and the middle school, how it's been working. Um, no cell phones?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have the population or the number of phones in our building, but it works. We take it if we see it. It goes the opposite. The watches too. Watches, yeah.
Sure. I think, you know, one thing to.
Yeah, that's another thing, the watches.
The watches.
Well, you know, we. So I'm covering two, two sections a week now. Um, and when you tell the kids to put them in the pockets when they come under door, they don't complain, they don't give you a hard time. They put them in there, and they stay there. The kids use the restroom, they don't try to take them with them. They follow what we're asking them to do.
Okay.
Um, but in certain times, you, you'll walk by this group of people sitting like this.
Yeah.
Not talking, not anything, you know? That's probably more so where it's coming from because we, we really don't have, during instructional times, the kids, the kids are obedient about phone than the instructors or the teacher.
Yeah.
Um, it's more of those kind of times where I see it and where it's, it is distracting.
Yeah.
Um, and, and it probably is taking away somewhat from their educational experience.
Yeah. And is that more like flex time stuff where they're
Hall, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's
Just going in, walking down.
In the hallway.
Yeah. Walking to the wall, you know? I think that's a problem.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a data guy and like, you know, those couple outliers that, um, it's everybody or, you know, they're always doing it, oh, by, and that kind of dialogue, I need specific data to get on board either for or against. So how many phones are getting taken away? How frequently when they're not following rules? That's the one that I need to know because the outliers are always going to happen.
So we can say very few because again, right, as I said, the kids are obedient.
Yeah.
So, so it doesn't seem to be a problem now. It's, it's more of a cultural thing, which we're all guilty about, right? We're all guilty of, I mean, just when we're getting ready for this meeting, 50% of them were saying it was on the phone, so we're, we're setting that example for everybody, right? So I think we just need to pump the brakes a little bit and say, okay, what, where's the problem? Let's address the problem. But is there really a problem? I don't know.
I, it, based on our current policy, is where I'm getting at. There, there isn't a problem in the instructional environment strictly, right? Strictly in the instructional environment. At the same time, and for me, I, I don't know if it's a problem necessarily, but it is sometimes to me kind of like, eh, like a, oh, the kids aren't talking, they're not, you know? When, when I'm walking through these common areas, again, that's me, right?
Yep.
I don't know if that's a problem societal or, you know?
Yeah. I think that's a generational thing too, and I'm going to stick to it.
Totally.
With that, it's like the kids are communicating through their phones, or they're talking through their phones, and I'm just kind of sticking up for that a little bit.
Sure.
You know, I'm, you know, I'm talking to my son all day long. I'm in school, probably during Mr. Coppola's class, which, I'm just kidding. But like, you know, it's, it's a different time, it's a different generation, so I don't want to just say, Adriana Forte says this, and let's wipe all the phones clean because
I agree.
So let's just really be mindful of the data behind it and recognize if there's a problem, is my opinion.
And I also think from setting the stage that a lot of schools have not been progressive and gone out and updated cell phone policies for 15 years, right? So we've kind of been on top of it, and ours went a lot farther than other schools had.
So lots of, the press that we're seeing now is people just doing what we're doing.
Right.
You know, like when you walk in the class.
Because we're the best.
I mean, we were, we, we were thinking ahead for sure.
Yeah.
Because it was a problem.
Yeah. Well, it's good to hear that that is how it's going and being addressed like that. Well, it's good to hear that that is how it's going and being addressed like that. And, and during instructional time, that it's not as much of a problem. I was expecting to hear a whole different side of the story with that, but I think that's great.
Speaking of the soccer issue, you know, that was about two outliers as well, it wasn't the entire parent group.
Yeah, 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 and I did, I hope I can express that a lot.
Yeah, so.
I just know it's a question of interest.
Is there a way to capture the data with confiscation of true violations?
I would have to start collecting it now.
Yeah, of course.
Because, uh, it is generally just like a handful of repeat offenders. It's not too.
Just like a handful of repeat parents.
Yeah, it doesn't go with anything that we have, right? It's, it's a handful that just seems like a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because sometimes these letters, right, it's like going after and go for the Howitzer, right?
Right.
So we can just leave this open as it is now?
Okay, so leave it as, we don't have to do anything.
Right. And just keep it with that?
My recommend, I mean, my opinion is.
Get some data and.
Is get some data and then have.
And have some conversations.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Matt, did you want to add anything?
No, I tend to agree with Seth that we need to get some information so we can make a good decision. I'd be curious to hear from the teachers and see how, if at all, it's impacting their classes. Because at the end of the day, those are the folks that are gonna have to enforce this as much as anybody.
Yeah, and like you said, Anita has to deal with all that. So it's not so much here in this building, but that building would be, should be dealing with that a lot, so. Okay, so do we need to vote on this?
The motion was just to discuss.
Just open and discuss.
Yeah. Motion accomplished.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to the next item, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquidation of school property as presented.
Second.
So the, the list of the property to be liquidated is in the packet. It's equipment and furniture from the old art room, which is kind of morphing into the kind of Wompak, Big Sky Broadway, Big Sky Junior, Big Sky, you know, many, many, many plays. Stories, everything you need.
Yeah. You need more space?
Something to do with it. Snug in. Yeah, so once that's approved, we'll follow state district protocols to, to liquidate this stuff. In fact, somebody already wrote and said, hey, I would like, after the times up, I would like these few things.
Sure, okay. Okay, any other questions? Call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOA as presented.
Second. So this is in the packet, too. This is the renewal of the MOA from the last two years. And I suppose during the negotiations this year, we'll try to get it as part of the agreement, so we don't have to keep repeating MOAs. This is for teachers who give up a prep period, we can compensate, we compensate them to, to cover a class. Last year, when we reviewed this MOA, we talked about collecting the data for the year, so this is, the data is, that's all they included in the, in the packet. 168 periods were covered in the middle school, high school, and 39 in the elementary school. This is all periods from all absences, coaching, field trips, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So everything went well?
I mean, it's a good, you know, at the end of the day, our best guest teachers are teachers. I mean, I know it, last year, they had a little more bandwidth because they were teaching one less period.
Yeah.
So if we can compensate them, I mean, certainly, we'd rather go other routes if we can.
Right.
But it, it works. We're, we're still in the same boat as we've been.
Right.
Tomorrow, we have some coaches out, I'm covering some classes. And this isn't probably, this isn't also inclusive of classes that you cover, I cover, is it?
Not for.
The data you get.
The data, no, I, my, pardon, not mine, mine.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the estimate and expenses for the well replacement as presented.
Second. So there's a well that's located kind of in that courtyard near the practice field. Got put in in 1996, I wanna say, exclusively for irrigation. So when the project got done, we brought on a lot more irrigation. It needed a bigger pump, and when they were trying to pull the pump, it collapsed. So we have to re-drill it, but it's a lot cheaper to re-drill it in the same spot, it's gonna be tricky to get to.
Yeah.
But they're gonna re-drill it in the same spot in October, November, once the ground freezes, so we can get across the practice, that practice field. And we, we can improve that, if that expense could come out of the project budget, because we did expand. This was kind of part of the scope and expansion of landscaping.
Does that sound?
That needs to be irrigated.
Yeah.
It won't come out of our building reserve or anything else, it can still come out of the balance left from the, um, from the building project, and we need it. I mean, that's what irrigates, we have, we have sprinklers right now.
Is that part of the contingency plan with that? Can that fall underneath the percentage of the contingency plan from that project or not?
Well, it can also just fall under, we do have a balance left outside of the contingency grid. We have, you know, we have hand sprinklers out there right now on that practice field, and we want it to serve its purpose.
Yeah. Right. Keep it going, okay. But other than that, it's not anything vital to any.
It's exclusively.
It's supposed to do that, so it'll be okay with that. Any other questions?
Yeah, they're ready to go on that, like, if we say yes, they can.
They'll be here, ready?
They're ready to go, but waiting until the ground freezes to get that well truck across without damaging the field.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Great, call for a vote, all those in favor? All right, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll make a motion to open discussion regarding the bus depreciation processes.
Second. Okay, this is gonna be a lot. So Corky and I met with the Transportation Committee, which is Matt, trustee Jennings, and trustee Dodd. My recommendation, get rid of this for discussion only, and then we make a proper vote in October on it. In the packet, we put the three different scenarios for depreciating. Specifically, we're talking about the electric bus that, that the district can purchase via an electric bus grant from the federal government. So in the, in your packet, you'll see the email chain from counsel. You'll see the opinion from OPI, which was also part of that email chain from camp, from our legal counsel, and the three different scenarios. The short story is, and I'll try to be articulate. If we buy a bus for $150,000, brand new, we don't trade anything in, we could levy the taxpayers a maximum of 20% of the cost of that bus every year to, I think it's 150 plus 20%, Corky? To $150,000 plus 20% to replace that bus.
No, that's who said.
Oh, just 100%?
It's 150% of the value, but no more than 20% per year.
Okay, there, okay. To replace that bus when it's no longer in service and no longer in need of us. In the past, our practice has been, if we were to buy a bus for $150,000 and we traded in a bus and got $30,000, we would depreciate $120,000, which was what the taxpayer paid in the first place. I mean, at the end of the day, they kind of paid that other 30, but that's, that's how our depreciation schedule works. So we're.
We would depreciate 150% of that $120,000.
So in this case, we're getting a grant for 300 and some odd thousand dollars. And so the one thing would, that we really, the, the two things that we need to do is, if we take this bus, we need to depreciate it at a higher rate. And we, that would be a job for the Budget Committee during the, to set the depreciation schedule. The other thing is, this is a significant change in our accounting practices. That's, and, and it's legal, it's, everything's okay with it, but it is a big change that the board would have to approve. And I'll let Corky talk about how that is a change, and then Matt and Matt, you guys both, you know, sat in long meetings about this, too.
So the difference, the difference comes down to the value of the bus versus what is paid for the bus. In the past, we've used what we pay for the bus as the benchmark, and then have taxed the tax, then have taxed the community 150% of what we actually pay. So we don't look at the MSRP, you know, deducted from Harlow's trucking, and then whatever trade in or discount they go, we get, we, we base it on what we actually pay. In order to replace an electric bus of $350,000, we can't go by what we actually pay, because we're only gonna be paying $30,000. So we'd have to base what we tax the, the community on, on the value of the bus, if we wanna replace it. So we, up to $150,000, so we could tax $500,000 to replace that bus in the future. If we don't want to replace the bus, and this is a one time, we look great for the community for an electric bus, and we're gonna say, five years down the road, we're going back to diesel, then we will just levy the taxpayers for whatever need, whatever the diesel replacement would be. The flexibility is with the board, the difference, but the accounting change, you know, specifically, the amount you're gonna, the quadruple levy you're gonna hit with local community, that needs to be approved by the board, that's a significant change. Does that make sense?
Yeah, does that make sense to you guys?
Makes sense. I mean, I'm certainly, from like a precedent perspective, um, there's like red flags going off when you start talking about OPI and Attorney Generals and spirit of the law. I mean, there, there's certainly a lot of considerations.
There's nothing in Montenegro that prevents the board or the school district from making the change. There's nothing that states we cannot do it.
Yeah.
It's if you want to, if you want to make the change.
And that, that was the advice of our auditors, was get the board to approve the change in your accounting practices and procedures. And so we, we did talk to other districts about this depreciation issue. The, the difference being, their practice had been to just, if they traded a bus in, they just depreciated what, the MSRP.
So they weren't going above and beyond, they weren't doing the 100%?
Even if they traded something in, they were depreciating the, the actual cost, what the district paid, plus the 50%.
Oh, okay. And we could still do that at this point, too, we wouldn't have to change anything, right? If we wanted to only depreciate for replacement gas or diesel, if this were to.
If, well, it would still be to someone a change in your accounting practice, because you would be, yeah, you would have to change, it would still be a change in the accounting practices, because you would still be depreciating more than your outlet.
Okay.
But it would not be a substantial increase in taxes.
Not that substantial.
Good. And since we're only physically putting out 30,000, and we're gonna be depreciating.
380.
Three, whatever, whatever, yeah. That's where that change is coming into play.
That's where the change in the tax would come into play, into the levied amount? And then just by nature of changing that, the accounting practice of, we're gonna levy more than we've actually put out.
Right.
That's where that change would come from, too. So, you know, in October, is what will be, whatever you decide, you know, I would ask you to just say, okay, let's make, can, will you approve making this change in the accounting procedure and practices and levying practices? And then the Budget Committee will set that depreciation schedule for the board to approve as part of the larger budget in, in August. Because we couldn't change, I mean, we can't change that depreciation schedule, right? It's, it's fiscal year.
Yeah.
And, and, and as we talked in the, in the, in the Transportation Committee, you know, we, we can, we can look at that depreciation schedule closer. I mean, I, I think from a, it was a student-led project, from a perspective of, you know, that the district's making an attempt to, to lower their carbon footprint. I mean, I, I think it's a, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
But it's a change.
Right. Guys, any questions about any thing? Matt, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, I don't.
So we'll just, this will stay open for now, we'll come back at the next month's meeting.
Yeah, maybe in between, we can have another, you know, Corky and Matt Dodd and Matt Jennings, let's have another Transportation Committee meeting, really talk it through. And then come back with a recommendation either way on that.
I mean, I've gotten good feedback from people in the community about stuff, I don't know if you guys have heard anything else, or.
Tremendous feedback.
Yeah, which I'm, I think is good, I'm.
I think the one question, we're going to circle back and find out what the total cost was going to be between the chargers and then insurance. Do we have a full number on what that would be for the district?
The charger is 30,000.
Right.
Yes, I mean, our insurance will go up just because of the value of the bus, you know, but every time we increase our asset pool, you know, our insurance goes up. So yes, our insurance will, will increase. The other piece is the unknown, there is a diesel engine that burns on these, so that was one of the things that the folks had warned us about. When they, when the bus pulls up to your, to the bus stop, you'll smell diesel, because it has a diesel, it's a diesel engine to run the heaters in order for it to work in the cold weather. So it's not a perfectly clean.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to know the whole package, so how much money we're saving on diesel, you know, maintenance costs, tire costs, generator or the battery charging station, like the whole package and not just what the bus costs and the depreciation value behind that. Like, it's more global for me than just that one thing. So that's something you have to track.
Yeah, and Seth, that's, that's tough, I mean, we, we tried to look into that, Dustin and I both did. We have, the, the repair pieces, the maintenance pieces are known.
No, I, I recognize that, so I feel like, sorry to interrupt, but I feel like this is like a year down the road type of decision, rather than right now. As far as, what are we really looking at, and are we saving money? And then the other piece is, the hearts and minds of Big Sky, right? Are we trying to do the right thing and set a good example for the community, which kind of overpowers this whole conversation to me.
So the, the, the data piece of that, that we can bring back is what our costs are, be pretty close on what a route bus would, would burn in fuel. And then what the depreciation schedule would look, would potentially look like at, at the price that Lizzie gives me on the bus.
Yep.
That we would be depreciating. And then, I mean, I think, you know, hearts and minds, that, that's an easy one, I mean, yes.
I think everybody's excited about that.
Yeah, so, I think we, we can, we can come back with a handful of those things, talk it through, and then just vote, really the vote will be about this change in accounting and levying procedures, if that's fair.
No, that's what I think, yeah.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions? So we're now voting on that right now, we're just leaving it open?
Yeah.
Any other motion wants to discuss something?
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Dustin, for clarifying, thanks Corky.
Make a motion to approve travel out of state for the Olympic High School football team on Wednesday, October 16th.
You sure you wanna go there?
We have a game against Lodge Grass, which is right on the Wyoming border, the closest place to state is Sharon, Wyoming, 17 miles away. So we'll drive down on Wednesday, that's that weekend of the teacher conferences, and the game's scheduled for Thursday at 1:00. So we'll drive down in a state shirt in Wyoming on Wednesday, and, um, yeah, play the game on Thursday.
We're hitting in Colster next week. You gotta leave a nice bus for the soccer team, no?
I, I don't think they have a game that.
You guys just flip coins and get to something? Like, uh, questions? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? As unanimously.
Lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the Wompak request to serve alcohol as presented.
Second. As mentioned previously, this is what we know at this time for the fall season, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at that.
Looks great.
But that's not even the winter season, right? The real Wompak stuff, so.
I think it's a little bit, it's a little of it.
Was it?
Yeah, it's, it's everything.
But you're steady. Black Box Series 1 is the last one, January 16th.
March 3rd.
Oh, on the right, okay. Anyway, my point was going to be between October and December 27th. That is a significant increase in things in the Wompak over the course of the last seven years, so, well done.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, so John worked with everybody, and, and again, there might be the occasional things that pop up, we try to capture everything, but everything means portfolio.
Great. Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As unanimously. All right, next date, February 8th, 3:45. Any adjourned?